Yeah, that's, okay, I've got thumbs up. We are Facebook Live for our work session for our meeting on March the 19th. That'll be our recess meeting. So we are going to get started first in our work session with Kevin Stafford. He's first on the list with Neil Schaefer, and he's going to give us an update on the Stark Road Hospital Road Extension that we had, we got some funding from the state for, and they've done study four, so we're going to hear what the end result is. So, Mr. Stafford?
I'll, I'll, I'll.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right.
Okay, I was just in line with the board how we got to where we are.
Okay.
We received an appropriation to, to study the extension and see if it's feasible from the state. It was one and a half million. We went into contract with Garber to purpose the need study, which was going back late last year. And so the second phase was to kind of enhance the study, get some preliminary engineering surveying done. And so that is kind of where we have stopped at this point. So that's where we are in the timeline. We spent about $300,000 at the 1.5, and so Kevin will tell you kind of where we are in that process.
All right. Thanks, Cody. So first off, I want to thank y'all for your vote of confidence in allowing us to kind of take the next step in this process. You know, it's one of those deals, one of the first things we did at a kickoff meeting. So everybody's excited about, you know, the hospital and Stark Road extensions. And at that kickoff meeting, I brought up some history that we were aware of of these sites. Keep in mind, y'all don't control any of the sites. This is private property. And if I could get this at the full scale, full page scale, and we'll hit a little quick history of what all, this is a busy map, but it tells you the whole story in my opinion. And I'll give you a little background. So in about 2010, we were working with the Link looking at, you see here, the Innovation District, if y'all remember this. Was one of the initial sites looked at for an industrial site, which is now, you know, the industrial park, which is north of town. We abandoned this site. This map was created by one of our subs head flutters at that time. At that time, what you see here is a combination of floodplains in the northeast side. The orange blobs are known cultural areas that have not been deeply studied, but nonetheless, they were on site. The other things you see here are wetlands and streams that are on site. So from an industrial perspective, it just was a no-go. It was too expensive to mitigate all the issues that were there. So we pulled up states, moved north of town at this point, and so this map was created then. Now, what you see here, these two, the green and the yellow lines, are y'all's chosen corridors from the study that Cody referenced from Garber. So we overlaid that. Now, there were more than just two routes, but these were the preferred routes that came out of that study. In the process of the kickoff meeting, the one thing I brought up were these environmental issues. And I said, really, y'all's first next step is to look at, you know, what the gift horse is at this point. And so we dig, dig a little bit deeper. A few things have been done in the last 14 years basis since we last looked at this. And basically, it came to a point where our guys were putting together a proposal for y'all to consider. Their number to me was four to five million dollars worth of cultural issues. And I said, time, and came back to y'all and said, you know, you're looking at multimillion dollars worth of mitigation, and it may bring attention to the site that may make it undevelopable long-term. And so out of respect for the private landowners, out of respect for the public dollars that this would have to go through, you know, it's a 15 to 20 million dollar venture to build these roads. And all of a sudden, you're going to spend four to five million just to potentially get out of the gates to then handcuff yourself. And so I come to you today to basically say, my recommendation is y'all abandon this site, abandon this project as a public road project. And once you let the genie out of the bottle, with federal funds, state funds, you can't put it back in. And again, out of respect for the private landowners, I think that would be the most prudent thing to do is let them develop this land at their own time and time. And so that is pretty much the one paper of what we have found. And so unfortunately, it's bad news, but I think it's, it's probably put on y'all's part that it's a no-go decision at this point in time.
Well, and part of what you determined based on the flooding, well, floodplain areas and the water areas, that that was, that would require a bridge or-
Correct.
-some extremely expensive roadway.
Correct. So, you know, talk about the expensive cultural side, which is probably the most unknown, right? That we do know. The floodplain issue, both you have floodplain and floodway, the cost of the bridge, but then you would have to have a no-ride certification that would have to go through FEMA and be certified. And then I haven't even touched on, there will be crossing of streams and wetlands as well that would have to be mitigated. And that's going to go through the Corps of Engineers. That's another long and expensive process. So environmentally, this is one of those, that decision is to kill the project. And it happens. It does happen sometimes.
Well, I would rather us do it now than get in the middle of it and go, well, what have we, what have we done?
Well, we could have led y'all on a goose chase and spent multimillion dollars and gotten nowhere to the same answer. And we just thought this was the prudent thing to do based on the experience we have with the site. And again, it's the same reason the Link pulled up states years ago when looking at it for industrial purposes.
Okay. Well, we appreciate it. Questions of Mr. Stafford while we have him? We appreciate your candor-
Thank y'all again.
...and your willingness to, to say, this is not a wise decision.
Well, hopefully y'all can repurpose the funds that you do have.
Well, and, and we will see. That may or may not be possible, but we'll let our representative Robertson give us some heads up on that. But anyway, we can use the funding to pay for those folks who have been assisting us in the project.
There you go.
All right.
I can thank y'all for the vote of confidence.
Thank you so much.
So I can bring better news on Friday.
That's okay. That's okay. Good to know. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Mr. Burnett, the street plans.
Good morning. We have talked a lot about roadways recently, so we're going to talk a little more, and I hope we're about to get to work. So what we're looking at today, this is the draft listing of roadways for 2024. This is the work that we're proposing to do. So in your package, you're going to have this list of roadways. And so what you're going to see in that listing is the street name, the extent of the work, the classification of the roadway. You have the roadway rating, which is from one through 10 scale that we're going to develop, the type of work we're proposing, and then the estimated cost. Okay? So the way that we have come to be in this list is essentially by following the maintenance treatment plan that we had done and passed on. So to remind you, what that plan does is it takes all of your roads and rates them one through 10 based on the condition. And then the plan tells you how much you should spend for each roadway rating. So you should spend so much on a four, so much on a five, so much on a six. And then for each of those ratings, there's a recommended treatment type. So what we have done is we have taken the roadway rating expenditure recommendation, laid it on top of the treatment types, and then pushed all of that down on top of the road system that we have. And so out comes this list, more or less, it's following the plan. And so this chart shows, shows what I'm talking about. So the bars are the roadway ratings, one through 10. The height of the bar is indicative of the cost you should spend. And so the gray bars are what's recommended in the plan, kind of follows a bell shaped curve. And then the maroon bars are what we actually intend to spend. So we're, we're mostly following the shape of these recommendations. You will notice the disparity on the categories one and two. The reason for that is because when the plan was created, we had some one roadways, but we knew they would be fixed on this year. So we told civil, hey, go ahead and shut them, it's completely, because we don't want a plan that's mean, plain year old. So these ones actually exist, and they're just not shown in this version of the plan. And then the twos, we're spending a little more on the two than what's recommended. The reason for that is because we have quite a few roads in the two category, and that's a critical point in the life of the roadway. Because you are one bad winter away from having to rebuild the road. And then one bad winter, your sole cement, which is expensive and invasive. And so we thought best to go ahead and spend a little more on those, try and get them back up to a better category.
Which would give us how much more life-
15 years.
-predictably.
15 years.
That much? Okay.
Yeah, but those would be a major of a lot. So it's a little thicker, a little more patchy, but compared to the cost of the sole cement, it's a much better deal. So going forward, we will, we will try to follow these gray bars, as it were, as much as possible, because that's what the plan says you should do. Okay, so I want to talk a little bit about what's new, what we'll see this year. First, let me talk about the budget. So we're spending 2.4 million in asphalt overlays. That's what we've always done. That's what you're familiar with. That's the patching, and then the building, the field. What's new is the preservation portion. So that's about a third of the budget at 1.1 billion dollars. And there's a variety of different techniques we'll use. I want to show you those in just a second. But that's kind of the breakout of the budget. And so those costs do include your striping, your testing inspection, and then the seex. That's a full term key price. That's the 3.5 million breakout right there. Okay? So a real quick look at what's new. So we're going to do quite a bit of micro-surfacing this year. This is the product that looks like asphalt. It feels like asphalt. When you walk on it, you really can't tell it's not asphalt, but it's very thin. And so it adds about eight to 10 years of life to a roadway, depending on if you do a single lift or if you come back and do a double lift. We'll do a little bit of both of those, actually. But this is what it looks like coming out of the truck. It comes out brown, which concerns a lot of people. But if you look just next to it, this is what it looks like when it hears. It's a really pretty black, slight gray kind of color. And then I like this, this image because it kind of gives you an idea of what you're getting. It is a little misleading. The thickness is actually about three eighths of an inch, maybe for a single lift, and then three quarters of an inch for two lifts. But this kind of shows the comparison to how it would get down. So we're really excited about this material. We will do some fog seal this year. This is about a three, four-year life extension. We use this in conjunction with the crack seal. So the crack seals the bars that everybody sees and typically don't like. But if you see those this year, know that that will be covered with a second treatment. We don't plan to crack seal anything this year that will only be crack sealed. Any crack seal will be covered with a secondary treatment method, at least for its first few years. So this is a liquid asphalt that sprays out of a truck. You spray it on the road. It's still in pretty good condition. And it's, it's got a really nice color to it. This, this entire highway here has been sprayed with this material. And so you re-stripe it when you're finished, and so you get a product that looks really clean. It's got a good pop to it, and it's not stastic. You're getting three to four years of life. So in your roadway listing, all of these are spelled out which streets you're getting which type of treatment. And then the last thing we will probably use in an ultra-thin overlay, this is asphalt. This is hot mix asphalt. But the difference is it's a very fine stone, and so you can lay asphalt in a thinner lift. So this is about half the thickness of our typical overlay. So you're somewhere between three quarters of an inch to one inch thick. And you'll notice it adds about the same life extension as the micro-surfacing. It is a little bit of a premium cost compared to that. You would use this if you had a street that, say, needed a little more structure added to it, or if you needed to get traffic on it a little quick. You know, micro-surfacing is going to take 45 minutes to an hour to cure. You can put traffic right back on this. So there's some utilitarian measures to go with this instead of the micro-surface. So that's a nutshell of the new methods we will use. I think the question I would have if I was in your seat would be, you know, is this going to work? Are we catching up? Are we actually gaining life in the roadway network? And that's what we've been talking about. So the first thing I would say is I would remind you of how much we have to maintain every year. This is the number of lane miles that the city is responsible for, which is 315 lane miles. And so the way you get to that is the length and width of every road normalized by a 12-foot travel line. That's what it comes out. So one way to think about this is every year, we lose one year of life on every road. Okay? So a way you could say this is every year, we lose 315 lane mile years, which is a little cumbersome. So you could just say every year, we lose 315 years of life. So what you want to do is you want to add at least that much life, if not more, back into the network every year, or else you're getting behind. So in 2024, we will spend three and a half million dollars. We use the overlays. We use the preservation. And those numbers tell us that we get 355 years of life from that project. So I know it was Friday, but the math on that-
Oh, that was wrong. That was just me.
The math on that would be 40 years gain. That's what we'll gain in 2024. So does any of the board remember what civil link in their presentation, they said, you need this many years to kind of start to catch up? It's 10 years. That's what we said. So if I take those 40 years and compare it to what we maintain, 315, it's about 10%, 10 to 12%. So what I'm telling you is this year, we'll gain 10 to 12% of life on a 10-year project. So that kind of makes sense to me. We didn't back into that number. We didn't fabricate that 40. We followed the plan, and the 40 is what popped out. So it tells me this, this should work. Now, these are numbers on the slide. This is engineering theory. I have not put down a micro-surface and watched the gray years. We know communities that have. We've visited them. We have seen this put into practice, but at this point, it's theory. What we will do is we will track this over time. And I say we, Stephen in our office will track this over time. He's the mastermind. He gets the credit for this. He has an Excel sheet for this, as big as the screen, full of equations and calculations, and this small stone beam. But what we can do is track every year what we did, where we did it, and then how old is it? And see over time, start to, you know, average out the accuracy of this, but the number says it will work. That's what I'll do here. So the last thing I would say before I give it to you for questions is, I was curious, if we were to take, if we were to start to increase the roadway, I guess, quality that we have, and we're, you know, that five, six category for everything, and we wanted to do just micro-surfacing, now, I'm not advocating that. We'll never do just micro-surfacing. This is, this is an example. If we could do just that treatment and try to gain the same amount of life that we're gaining this year, how much would it cost? So the answer is it would cost 1.86 million dollars. So that's about half the cost that we're spending this year to get the same life. So there's a lot of implications of that. I mean, you know, I, I think one goal could be that maybe you cash flow this project every year, put these stacks rather than having to bond every time we went out on the streets. So that's, that's not my decision on how you be allocated, but the point is, is if we do this, all the roads get better, and then you can spend less money each year, you can save the quality rate. So that's what we're trying to get to. We're really excited about it. And if you have questions, feel free to ask.
Excellent. I feel sure there are some. Henry, I thought I saw your hand go up. Were you just looking? Okay. Anyone? Pam? All right.
Oh, Mr. Burnett, does the micro-screen have any aggregate in it? Was it a lot of small fines?
It's really crushed. It's, um, it's not even, I wouldn't call it aggregate. It is aggregate, it's crushed very fine. So you did get some of that. I mean, it, for all intents and purposes, it is like a miniature version of asphalt.
Have you, and we've talked about, you know, I've talked about this, Paul, would you consider getting an alternate bid for the contractor to use crushed limestone in lieu of crushed gravel, or just, just because? I see a lot of places, and it seems to wear where it's, because you're an engineer, you made the statement, say, no, it doesn't. I mean, so I don't know, but I just know where it's, I've seen it put down. It, it seems to get, it doesn't come up. It just gets hard and slick if it gets older, but it doesn't necessarily, so if it's not prohibitively expensive, more expensive than crushed gravel or something, whatever, you know, that kind of thing? Is there, could we do that? We can-
You can get an alternate bid. I, I think the ship is probably sold this year, but we could in, in following years. And we did do that, I think, in 2020 or 21. We saw that the cost for the same work is about 30% more.
Why, why?
And the contractors love it. They love to put it down. It is a better road, but the, the material itself has to be, you know, loaded in, trucked in, shipped in, or something. We're sitting on top of river rock, which is what we use, which is why it's brown, that slate gray, that limestone. It's not something that we have as available to us.
The part of the state that I used to live in used, or you saw the crushed limestone, you saw it high, when they, when the, when the surface go away a little bit on asphalt, that was the gray. And see, Maridin used it a lot. Is that because the railroads bring that stuff down in that part of the state? I mean, is it just the logistics of, of bulk movement or, or transportation of that stuff to where the asphalt plants can use it in that part of the state? Down in Jackson Place, you see a lot. Versus here, you would take closer to the sources in Birmingham and that part that you'd see it more, that's what you don't.
You don't. And I don't know all the logistics of where it is, where it comes from, the rail system. But I do know that the issue is the transportation.
Oh, all right. Oh, I see.
Well, let me ask a quick question. You indicated a light lift of asphalt. How is that differentiated on here if we're going to use it? It's not fog sealed, it's not crack sealed, it's not single micro, it's not double micro. What is it?
So it, here's my thought on that. It would be a complete even swap for the micro, double, micro. It's not on the list at this point because there's some, we had it earlier, but we don't have all of the fine tuning. The asphalt plant has to run a special lift just for that.
Okay.
So they won't only do so much. They won't run you just another coldness hack. So we're still working through some of that. So what we need to do is if we can work out the logistics, it would swap to probably like a double micro somewhere.
Okay.
And we would make that even swap for that roadblock.
Okay. All right. Well, that answers-
This is the same treatment, or more or less same life extension, just to swap materials. So we're still working through that.
All right.
Will it still have a smoother ride, smoother ride? Will it be kind of?
Yes, sir. That, we will. And so the fog seal is going to give you the same ride you have now. It's just a spray. So what it's doing is sealing the road. I think North Bond Street is slated for this this year, that's in your work. That got overlaid three or four years ago, perfect timing for the application. The micro is thin enough, it is, is going to mirror the quality of road you probably had. It will smooth some. But it is, again, it is not adding asphalt. It is a seal to protect the road. The difference in the fog seal and the micro is the micro is a wearing surface. It has some aggregate. It's smoother. It's easier to walk on. But you're not having lots of thickness. But at the same time, I'm not going to put this on roads that are falling apart either. There's a specific rating that should go on, and if, if the rating's a four, I'm not going to micro level the overlay. Or if it's a six, that's the right application. It goes in pretty good shape, so we can use it there.
It's a preservation as much as anything, right?
It is. Yeah. Preservation is the word, because we're not going to preserve something that's falling apart.
Right, right, right. Okay. Anything else in?
I want to ask one more question. The process that's right under overlay, what is that, the one that, oh, where's the thin overlay? What do you call that?
The ultra-thin overlay?
Ultra-thin. This, this, this cost reduction and getting the same quality, same life, that's not based on using that, it's based on using micro?
It, it is. So it would be a bit more of a premium cost for the ultra-thin overlay. But at the same, on the same token, we follow those along with the budget, which we had through a budget chair, I guess, three and a half. And so we're not going to stop and scrubbing digging around. A lot of times, we've got some contingency going through this where underwriting. So I'm not going to go ultra thin something to bust the budget, but I do think we have an opportunity to do it within the context of the budget for the right road. We just have to find out how much we have to do for it to be worth the plan.
The, oh, the micro, the micro seal will crack scope through, I mean, if you've got cracks on, I mean, if, if you're old asphalt, not base pavement, but cracks, won't that, won't that in time?
Potentially. Now, if we do, I can-
Before an overlay, we'd see.
Sure, sure. It's a good question. Most of the roads we're going to micro-surface will crack seal first. And so it will help substantially. Everything we're flush to it over time. And a crack seal will prevent most of those from coming through, or at least extend it years out. So that's the plan. Crack seal, micro-surface on top of that. For that reason.
When do you want us back to decision on this?
Tuesday.
All right. Good. Thanks.
Anyone else? Call the district, call the local?
I'd just like to say that, that I'm, I'm very excited about this as a way to preserve- preserve and enhance our roads, do the milling and overlaying where it's appropriate, but, but doing just routine maintenance on other places. My neighborhood, most of the roads in my neighborhood, not all, but most of the roads in my neighborhood are in that five, six range that, that we talk about being where you have to start doing a little, a little more work to them. And they're anywhere from, some are a little newer than others, but, but my particular street was repaved in two thousand and nine. It's now at that point where, you're familiar with it, Cody. It's now at that point where it's got cracks, but it's not showing any real failures. It just needs, um, to be refreshed. And, and I think this is a perfect use for it. And I think, I think in neighborhoods, it's where we're going to really see our, our bank for our buck because we're going to be able to do more. And the wear and tear on the roads is not the same as it is on, of most of those roads. It's not the same as it is with arterial roads and minor surface roads. So I, I just, I'm, I'm excited about it as a project, and I hope it works as well here as it has in other places.
And to that point, neighborhood roads are your lot of roads too.
Yeah.
Usually twenty-six, twenty-eight feet, so that's where you build the length of your bike. The way this would work, I think, I think Chestnut's a good example, is he would come in, we would patch anywhere that started to fail or has issues with a five-foot patch, crack seal everything, and then come back with micro. So it's a multi-step process. So that's the, that's the general.
I think it's a great potential.
One more one I'm out.
Okay.
Um, did you say that on this micro-seal, like, uh, street extension to forty years where we get the same, you know, that kind of thing, we could do that by our budget? Did you say we'd get close to being able to do that, cash that out? I mean, the, of our, without having these bond money? I know the question I'm going to is, would that five million dollars in bond, is that, would that go for capital projects for, like, Old Mayhew rebuild or, or where? So we could just put the bond money on brand, you know, rebuild somebody's, wake somebody's? So what, what would that be?
Yeah, so I'll let Alderman Sistrock answer the reallocation question, but the goal would be is eventually we can stay on the path. We hopefully can get to the point where it's economically cheap enough to maintain good roads that we wouldn't have to deradically bond or something.
And, and that's, that's exactly what I was going to say, is that the, the one point eight six million that you're talking about, that we can potentially fund out of use tax on a pay-as-you-go basis, is, is maybe ten years into the future. We'll, we'll still have to figure out how we're going to stay on target to, to get to ten roads, ten years in the future. But, but we've, we've got a plan that's going to take us through for, for a good bit of that time, so.
It's almost a catch-up at this point.
The idea of taking bond money and using it to build capital project type stuff, it's just simply, it's logical if you can get to that point.
Yes, amen.
And then you can fund your, your stuff, like what you're talking about here through your budget, that kind of thing. So if we get to that point, that'd be good.
I hope all the force here to see it happen, I've been there eight, ten years.
No, let's don't go there.
And a lot of roads are still revealed, a lot of patches are built. We're at the very beginning, but, um, you know, over time, we should head that way.
I think it's exciting, and I'm delighted that y'all are looking at different ways that we can get better. I mean, that's part of what it's all about. So thank you very much for bringing it forward, and we will look forward to the success that comes with it. All right. Thank you. All right, guys, let's get into our agenda and see if we can get some things on consent, and then we can watch a ballgame. Uh, we have two sets of minutes. Mr. Huskerson, you and Lisa are both comfortable with those minutes as being where you want them to be? Could we go consent for those?
Consent.
Okay. Um, comments, board comments, anything anyone wants on the record for printing? Is Mr., where is Mr. Ashford? Somebody see if he's got any introductions or anything? Okay. Yeah, here his name called. Um, okay, so we have public hearings. We have the remaining public hearings associated with the Ruth Road properties, which are going to be secondary. But Mr. Havlin is here to give us a little bit of a preview on the public hearings for the special exception and the use exception, I guess.
Yes, first of the public hearing for a special exception on Yellow Jacket Drive. It's an experimental zone. District allows for the applicant to build a single-family residence.
It's the one that's very near the, the storage units, that's in between storage units and Jackson Street.
Yeah, it's, uh, one lot over from the Jackson-Yellow Jacket intersection to the west.
Yeah.
On the north side of the road. Um, and then the second one is a use exception for a sign at the hub. As you've noticed, they've been demolished in front, rebuilt the courtyard. They removed a lot of the existing wall that was there, and on that existing wall, they would add money for that. So this is part of that request, and that's only different from a quarter lot, you need a extension.
Alderman Sistrock? It, it, it sounds like everything's within, within the scope of what they, they can do. I just wanted to hear you say that there are no sightline issues with.
No, because it's actually not even.
At the intersection.
But it's not all in the court. It's located close to the drop-dee lane than it is to the intersection.
If you haven't been by there, they're really making some nice.
Southern, yeah.
Yeah, they've added trees and all kinds of landscaping. And that's where they're going to have the crawfish boil, assuming they can, crawfish, what is it? Crawfish?
King cok.
Thank you, king cok, yes. Um, assuming they can find enough crawfish to do it, you know, so.
Challenge.
Yeah, I know, maybe shrimping crawfish boil, anyway. All right, and second, anything else other than that about the money?
They're both, you'd have to refer by.
Okay, all right, cool. Well, we will have public hearings on those, so. And then the Ruth Road, Mr. Huskerson has been in contact with Mr. Priceox's attorney, and I don't know that you've been recently in, in contact with him, but they're aware of this second public hearing and in consideration on that.
Hopefully, I can ask him that we've handled it appropriately, and we'll see.
All right, well, we will see, won't we? All right, so this, this next one, guys, is kind of a surprise. I spent all, pretty much most of yesterday putting together resolution and letters of support and that sort of thing. This is an application, as of Tuesday, I got word from Congressman Guest's office that the grant process for this year is out, and you have like ten days to put in an application. So this would be an application for community funding, community project funding for the wastewater treatment plant, which, as y'all know, we are in, um, in need of upgrading and expanding. And so this would be hopefully an opportunity for us to get some additional funding from the federal folks for that. We've been very fortunate so far, and so I would like to think that maybe we will continue to be so. But that's what this is about, and so the resolution should be in the packets. Is it, Lisa, okay, the resolution should be in the packets, but this is an application. It would be eighty-twenty, but getting money for it is better than having a hundred percent of it on us. So that would be it. So any opportunity to put that on consent, folks?
And I'd just like to say that the match will, the match will come from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, not from the general.
Yes, yeah, this is, this is enterprise fund, so this is not tax dollars. Okay, all right. And then we have a resolution. Um, Alderman Sistrock, do you want to run with this one?
Sure, sure, sure. In, in 2022, we authorized the issuance of up to ten million dollars in bonds that would be paid from the use tax money that we're, um, we're receiving. In 2022, the state made a change allowing us to use that money for debt service. And so we issued five million dollars of those bonds. We have five million remaining that we can continue to issue. And this is just the resolution that allows us to sell those bonds. It, it would be paid for out of the use tax money, so no impact on, on tax dollars, general fund tax dollars. It will be used for the street projects, and it will allow us to fund the next couple of years of the things that Cody was talking about early. So this year and, and a good bit of next year too, depending on what else falls into our lap in the meantime.
Okay, so again, we have already done the authorizing. Any issues? Okay, consent, okay, let's do it. All right, uh, community development, we have Joseph Teese, who is applicant for Ward One Planning and Zoning Commissioner. I believe Alderman Moreland is comfortable with him and y'all. Yeah, okay, so consent for that one, all righty. And calling for two public hearings to amend the UDC. Daniel, you want to give just a little preview on that one, please?
This is just one of our normal routine statements. Probably the biggest thing to do in this is report address in the code enforcement process. Um, we've kind of realized that some of the action items for code enforcement, scattered drop dees, we're consolidating those all in Section three nineteen, and just making the process a little somewhat smaller.
Okay, cleanup, yes, sir. Okay.
Consent for sure. Um, at one point, we talked about, and forgive me for not committing any long-term memory to this, but at one, at one point, we talked about amending some of the noise regulations. Have we done that already? And I don't remember it, or it was, okay, we did it, we might not remember. The last one? Okay, all right.
Which way did we go, more stringent or less stringent?
More.
Noise restricted.
I think we've defined it a little better.
Easier to follow.
Yeah, the base was creating a problem.
It's just made it a harder enforcement for labels written, so.
It's easier to enforce it here for a while, that's good.
Okay.
Thanks for refreshing my memory.
All righty, all right. Engineer, under engineering, we have permission to advertise for the Lampkin-McGomery Intersection Improvement Project. Everybody's familiar with that, or we need a refresher?
I've got some, I had to pull it up. I don't know the names.
Why don't you go ahead and pull it up for Alderman Moreland, since she probably was not here when it was originally put up?
This is everybody's favorite intersection.
Yes.
So we're overlaying the rest of Lampkin this year, the work that's been listing. And so there's a pretty obvious need for some, I would say, traffic and pedestrian improvements at the intersection. So the grills on the bottom left, Renaissance on the bottom right, that kind of catches you up. So non-ADA, if you've driven through here, you know there's really too many options. There's too many designated rights, left, people want to go. So we actually had a, two traffic engineers look at the traffic data, and they, they said that removing some of these superpluses lanes would not impact level of service. So what we would like to do is consolidate some of the east-west travel lanes. Well, there's less turning options, actually. And then that gives us room to do these ADA bump outs, so you have these ADA ramps. These define on-street parking, so you kind of got this barrier. This is really a, a common thing you see in, like, downtown communities. So you address the pedestrians and you address a lot of traffic issues at the same time. So what do you think is the best one?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burdette, this still, that technique is still active as well, correct?
Correct. I'll answer that one, yes.
By the way, Kansas City Center is now the CPKC?
Yes, they are. We're in, we're in talks.
Canadian City.
Yes.
If we ever get to where, because cars stop way back. And that's, and then they stall up, and the people at the side, they don't know they're starting. They, we, I mean, I've gotten, I just come on up to the thing, cause I'm, so I'm going to fool somebody, that kind of thing. But some, it would be nice at some point in time, that'd be a normal four-way intersection. But while the railroads are, we probably, that thing's got to be back there, right?
Yes, we have to, we have to respect their right of way. Okay, all right, consent for that one?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty. Uh, approving the letter of agreement with Neil Schaefer for professional services. Um, they just need to be paid for what they did for us, so it'll come out of those funds.
Consent.
Okay, consent. Uh, low-term bid from Falcon, do you want to talk about these bids that we got from, on both these items, Cody?
I'll do it really quickly. This is from the bids from the local workers talked about. We have multiple bids. We can send in one contractor to do everything. We've got four proposed. We've got asphalt guy, preservation guy, the striking guy, and the full-depth reclamation. So this is for the asphalt, the first one, the signal is for the preservation, and then next, we're going to have striking and full depth. So all four of those comprise this project.
And this is, this is that new term bid that we haven't done before, so.
Similar to this, which is applied.
Yeah, okay, consent for those?
Consent.
Okay. Then we've got authorization to advertise for bids for Old Mayhew Roadway Improvement Project. I'm looking forward to that one, too.
We're a little ahead of schedule on this, but we don't think the lane will be improved. Neil Schaefer should have the plans done, I hope, in the next few weeks. We're going through some lane acquisition with MSU to have the route. But we want to go ahead and have permission to advertise, so we can try to get good, um, we'll help you do it, but that's the goal.
Start construction of, or rebuild of Old Mayhew Road with the straightening out, like this song?
Turning, not straightening out.
I mean, I mean.
It's a tight time on Old Mayhew, and, and based on some of the funding, we may decide to, for the logical phases, build a new road, it depends on the cost estimates, depending on the funding available. We intend to do at least, probably from more of well to, to Eastly this year.
Are we, is this contingent on grant funds, or is this part of the bond, part stuff, or what?
Bond and.
So we would have the money potentially.
Bond and match from the county and some other, other things, but, but the bond funds are there to help cover it.
We are hoping, hoping that there'll be some county participation. Uh, supervisor trainer has been positive about being able to help with this particular project, so.
Is this a, this is the same road with, when, when, I guess you put a four, a four or six-inch overlay when you get through building, rebuilding the base, and that, that street, that road's gone, I mean, it's.
We had a geotech engineer to take a reclamation, and some twelve inches of reclamation, or, or five inches of asphalt.
What do you estimate?
Uh, we haven't, we haven't updated that, so I think building the new portion of roadway is five or six hundred. And I think the whole reclamation is in the one and a half range. So you're looking at two million up the door for the new bids.
To our corporate limits, to that three-way stop, is what we, of course, it's got to stop there because that's the end of our segment, right? Going out Old Mayhew to the, the, we, our corporate limits is that three-way stop where the, where the apartment complex is, or we go further?
We go all the way to one eighty-two.
We're to one eighty-two, yes, sir. Just about six thousand eight, sixty-one hundred eighty.
It's a mile, mile and quarter, something like that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. We've got authorization to enter an agreement with an independent contractor, Mark Show. This is Mark Shock, excuse me, this is an extension.
It is. He's on the work floor.
Okay, consent. And then we will hold off on a, the twenty-four street improvement project till we have everybody in the room.
Right.
Um, all right, claim stock it. We will go financials. Anything about the financials, Ms. Harden? Okay, consent for that one? And then naming Renaissance Bank, I think they were the preferred folks?
Based on their index insured interest rates and their services.
Okay, all right. Consent for that one? All right, thank you. Uh, fiscal year audit, Mr. Scrivener is going to join us?
April second. Um, this, this, we are accepting the audit. There is one last step that they have to go through to determine a high-risk, low-risk audit and technicalities that don't impact us or the audit itself.
Okay.
But he cannot come and present until they have completed that step.
Okay, but we can accept the audit.
We can accept it.
So consent for that one?
And I received it yesterday afternoon after, um, the paper packets were completed. So I'll have everybody copy Tuesday.
Okay, how many pages?
Hundred and nine.
Can we, can we like do the executive summary or something rather than print a hundred and eighty pages?
There's a letter, there's a letter on the front that says.
But I don't think anybody's going to want to read a hundred and eighty pages in an audit, right?
There's a letter on the, there's a letter on the front that says, in our opinion, it fairly presents the position of the city.
Why don't you provide that and let the other one be a PDF if somebody wants to pull it down? Save, save a few trees. All right, thank you. Um, Fire Department, a FEMA grant for, um, let's see. Oh, this is staffing nine firefighters at Fire Station Five.
Calico.
Conversation, conversation.
And, and, and I am very much want to applaud the Fire Department for looking for a way to, to do this. What, what we've been presented is sort of limited in terms of us being able to make a, an informed decision. And in, in, um, what I would like for us to do is, at a minimum by Tuesday night, have a little bit of additional information and, and possibly even push this to the first meeting in April, depending on how difficult it is for them to, to provide a little better information for us to make a decision on. The grant is not due until sometime in, around the eleventh or twelfth of April, so.
So it's not a transition in particular.
Yes, they've got time to, they've got time to do that. But it, it's, I'd like to see, what I would like to see for me to make a decision is, um, the other costs that will be associated, not just the personnel, to be sure that the personnel costs that are included in there are covered under the grant. For instance, a lot of times grants won't pay overtime, and we do have some overtime factored into these numbers. So I'd like to see what the total cost to the city is going to be from the grant and then from the, the, the other general funds.
And the commitment associated with it.
Yes, and the commitment that's associated with it. So, um, the other part of that, which gets to that commitment piece of it, So the other part of that, which gets to that commitment piece of it, is how do we phase in being able to maintain these positions once, once the grant is over and once that fourth year of our commitment to keep the positions are there? So we've got to have a plan for how we're going to pay for it on a go-forward basis, and, and be sure that that's available.
Is this a three-year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, all right.
And the other, the other part of it is, the other part of it is, and I don't know that I was looking at the right thing on the internet, but I was looking at a safer grant information under FEMA, there is not a match required, I don't think. So, so I don't know if having a match enhances the, the likelihood of our getting a grant or not, but it may be that we don't want to take that exact approach to how we phase into the city. So, so just, just more, more information, not so much about the idea of hiring nine firefighters and using grants, but how do we, how do we do this in a sustainable fashion?
Let me explain this again.
Alderman Sistrung, I'm sorry.
Listen, it's a hard, first year, 75%, 25% third year, future funding, 100% for the city, and we can presume that before we-
100%.
How, what's the turnaround time on the grant? Once we apply and it's lit?
I think, I think what I read on the internet, and again, you know, I, I read on the internet, I think is the end of July.
We know, we've been awarded-
Well, it's right there on the bottom, July 34th.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I, I just want to say that this is going to be an opportunity for us to get that station five back open, get staffed, and I would hope that when we start budget time, that we, that we consider that as we develop our budget, the 25% to get, get that, you know, this is something needed, and this station was built, and it protects part of our city, and, and it's just something that we need to do. And the fourth year, across that bridge, we get to it.
And I, I'd like to tag on to what you're saying there, that, that one of the problems that we have is that that station was funded with a grant, and at the time that we accepted the grant and built that station, and I wasn't on, on board at that time, but at the time we built it, they did not have a plan for how they were going to staff it. And so it's been something that we've struggled with for the, what, 15 years now, since, since that station has been built.
Had, did, did they staff it with grant money?
No, they didn't have any plans for staffing.
I mean, how did they staff it?
They didn't.
And it's never been staffed?
Well, we added a couple, added a couple, and-
We never got the nine people, which was-
At one point, at one point, we were close, but we were never fully staffed throughout the city, because we weren't able to recruit and retain enough firefighters to be fully staffed.
It was fully staffed at one time when three was closed.
Yeah, man.
That's as close as we got.
So, so grants, grants are a great thing, and can be, be used to really leverage city funds, but you have to have a plan for what happens when those grant funds are gone. And I just want us to be sure that we have a plan and that we understand that by year four, you're talking about two mills of, of city funding for the-
Maybe we'll grow, maybe we'll grow a wind.
Well, and, and I've had that thought too, Alderman Beatty. There is, there is a certain amount of organic growth that we'll see in property taxes and sales taxes, but we will also have organic growth in, in city expenses, and so, so will we grow ourselves into two mills? I don't know.
Well, and there may be other options out there to look at for, for partnering, for moving, moving forward.
I've, I've looked at cities our size in, in and out of the state of Mississippi. It's, I won't say it's unusual, but we are ahead of the curve for fire departments in Mississippi for this, our size to have fire stations. If you look at the southeast United States, we are not ahead of curve for cities our size to have fire stations. It's more than normal if you get outside of Mississippi, and I, I don't know, but anyway, so I, I just think if we, if we look in, look at how we stack up, we're not looking at our sister down the road, 75 miles or 30 miles, we look at, you look originally how you stack up with all in Alabama, or, you know, wherever, Dublin, Alabama, or, or-
Someplace in Arkansas.
Or someplace in Arkansas, like Eldorado, somewhere like Etzvira, or something, see what their rates are, and how many stations they have, with their population, that kind of thing, so. But I think it's a good thing, we need to get Station Five fully staffed and open, and solidify that next time the Raid Bureau comes in to, that three raiding, keep, keep a good solid three raiding, and there again, it's not just a norm, it's a measure of how good you are, because if you got, if that's this station, you got, got it staffed, got it open, your city is safer, no doubt about it. So that's something I want us to work toward, but thank you, ma'am.
And Jonathan, will you make sure the chief is, perhaps wants to get in touch with Alderman Sistrung to answer some of those questions for, and be ready for Tuesday, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a question for Jonathan?
Yes, sure.
How many firefighters does it take, like, on a shift to staff five?
It's going to take-
Three.
That's what it takes.
And that's based on the trucks.
Would this require any additional command personnel?
Yes, so, for personnel, you're going to need, you're going to have to promote three sergeants if you go off years, and three detectives.
So, so will there be more than nine people associated with reopening that station?
All right, so we will leave that one off and have it, have a discussion. And next is for Tyler Davis to travel for a Swiftwater Rescue Technician Course, so consent for that one? All right, under HR, Mr. Ashford, I see you back there. We have hiring, none of these are positions that are not, okay, that are not already prepared for, so will we consent for those? Okay. And then under parks, we have a low bid for the J.O. King Splash Pad, which is exciting. Approval of that one, consent for that? And then the quote from MagCor on the tables and chairs, so this would be the, not necessarily equipment, but furnishings for the Needmore Center, so consent for that one? All right, and then under police, we have attending investigative interview course. Anything on here that you need us to talk about? Chief, I see you back there. Is it all pretty basic stuff for you?
It is, it's just kind of been a basic, yes, ma'am.
Okay, trainings and grants, so consent for those? All right. And then under sanitation, we have two X-Mark lasers, and actually, it dates three, because Mr. Smiley found an extra one that he could kind of wedge in there on sale, right? So we get three, three X-Marks, zero turns for our, for our mowing, our landscape, so.
We personally love mowers.
Were you purchasing, ended up getting them from the co-op? Where did you get them?
They have a brand, they're tied in with-
Okay.
Where was that?
Where's, where are they located?
Mathis.
Mathiston, but they're tied in with the co-op.
Okay.
Consent for that? Okay. And utilities. John, now see, you hear anything you want us to know about? This is the rehab on that elevated water tank, that's the Isaiah Lane one, which has got the start with parks on it, and then we got to do those periodically. Lowest quote for this infrared camera for substation, consent for that? And then authorization of postage meter renewal contract, which is a contract. I assume you've seen that one, Mr. Huskerson?
Yes, ma'am. It's a continuation.
It's a, yeah, it's just a renewal, but, so.
It's a different machine and different cost.
Yeah, but, all right, take a look at it, and if, if we need to pull it off for some reason, let us know, we put it on consent. And then executing a contract renewal with Kimpro for herbicide, so, and that is a renewal, so consent for that one?
Consent.
All right, that will take us to the end of our, end of our session. We have, anything that we need to talk about before we adjourn? All right, seeing none, we will close the meeting, and if anybody wants to stay, pizza should be coming, and we got a ballgame we're going to put on the screen.